Everybody, we're gonna go ahead and get started. All right. Welcome to the September 26 Fairhope City Council Meeting. Appreciate everyone coming out in attendance. We're gonna have Pastor Rick Maligoni from Fairhope Christian Church with the opening prayer, followed by the pledge. Thank you Pastor.
Let us pray. Most gracious and loving God, we call in your Spirit to fill this place this evening. We pray for patience as differing views are expressed. We pray for guidance to make the best decision possible. And pray for the will to work together for the common good. We're asked for a blessing upon all the leadership here, as well as all who are present, who have an interest in the future of this great city. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. All right, council, before we get started today, I've got one item is being pulled from the council agenda. Anyone in the audience, item number seven is being pulled. I've got two items to request to add to the agenda. One, we discussed in the work session, and that was the tires for the Caterpillar 918 at the transfer station. The other item I just missed when we were going over the work session, and that is FIF has requested use of... FIF is hosting a piano... I'm trying to find where that is. Pianos in the Park event, and they're requesting use of sidewalks, streets, et cetera. And we can get into more detail on that when we get there. But that request is for October 22 event, so they didn't wanna delay any longer than adding that. And the event itself, I believe, is being held at the Halsted Amphitheater, and they're just wanting to block off some of that area on School Street between Morphe and Fairhope Avenue for access. So if y'all would, council, looking for a motion?
I will make a motion to amend the agenda to add these two items.
All right. Motion to add, and a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. And item that'll make item number 27 will be the tires, and item number 28 will be the FIF event. Okay. First item up then on the council agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September 12 council meeting and the September 12 work session.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Mayor, your report.
Good evening. I just have a couple things tonight. First and foremost, we're gonna be reviewing the budget on the council agenda tonight. I really wanna thank the staff, Kim and Asland in particular from Treasury, for their hard work on the budget, and also thank the council for the hours that we've spent going through the budget. So hopefully, we can get that passed tonight. And again, just wanna thank everybody for their input on that. The second thing I wanna do is honor somebody pretty special here to Fairhope and to me, Mr. Faust. I'm gonna make you stand up here with me for just a minute.
Okay. Can I ask a prayer?
You can, you can stand right... You can, or you can stand right there with them.
Okay.
So as most of us know, Mr. Faust has been Alabama State Representative for many years, and he is going to be retiring to go home to enjoy his retirement. And so I wanted to do something to recognize him and just tell him how much we appreciate his service to not only Fairhope, but to Baldwin County and to the state of Alabama. So I have a certificate of appreciation. It says, "This certificate is awarded to Joe Faust in recognition of his many years of public service to the Baldwin County Commission, where he served as Chairman of the Baldwin County Commission, Vice Chair of the Baldwin County Commission, and Chairman of the County Economic Development Committee, Chairman of the Parks and Land Management, and Vice Chair of the Committee on Environmental Resources, and his service to the state of Alabama as an Alabama House Representative from 2002 to 2022. As an Alabama House Representative, his committee assignments include in service as a member of the Baldwin County Legislative Delegation, Agriculture and Forestry, Transportation, Utilities, and Infrastructure. These years of dedication and commitment are to be commended. Joe is also a former board member of the Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance, former board member of the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce, and has served as a board member for the Marietta Johnson School of Organic Education. Serving our state, county, and community, Joe has contributed to the quality of life that people have come to enjoy and has left elastic impact on Fairhope and Baldwin County." You know, Mr. Faust has been a family friend for a number of years. Him and my dad actually have gone to school together, and just, he's always been part of my life here growing up, and has just, you know, done great things, again, for Baldwin County, Fairhope, and our state. And we're gonna miss you and appreciate your service.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Bravo. All right. I want that.
I'd just like to say that I think I've lived here most... more than any of the rest of it.
Don't look that hard at me.
We came to Fairhope in 1942, and I tell you, it's been a good ride, and I thank the city of Fairhope, both past council and mayor, and this council and mayor. You're doing a good job, and I thank you for it. And thank you for this recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir. God bless you.
I also just wanna recognize his family that's here. He's got his daughter here with him, Andrea, and he's also got his wife Sharon. Thank you for being here. We all know that when you do these kinda jobs, that family is foremost. Family is always the one to sacrifice. And also Teddy Joe, where's he? There he is, right there in the back. I didn't look past Sharon, I'm sorry.
I said you need to thank me for the budget.
Yeah, we do. We need to thank you for the revenue. We talked about you earlier. Yeah. We talked about what a good job you do providing us with that revenue. So thank you. So thank you, Mr. Faust, for being here.
Thank you. Senate Mayor, all right. Concludes the mayor's report. The next item on the council agenda is public participation, and this is for agenda items five through now 28. So if you wish to address the council just on agenda items, you've got three minutes, please come forward to the podium and give your name and address to the city clerk. Floor is open. All right, we'll go ahead and close the floor. And this time, we'll turn it over for council comments. Councilman Burrell?
I just, I wanna thank the mayor, and Kim, and her staff, and everybody that worked on the budget, the department heads, and, you know, and your staff, everybody that worked for you to put so many, many hours into putting together a budget, and all the council members that spent a lot of time pouring over this budget. I wanna reiterate something that was said in the work session, that is, it is a working document, it's a fluid document, and, you know, while it's based on Teddy's numbers that he gave us, at least for ad valorem tax, and we did discuss that in the work session.
And I gave you credit.
And I think that we got a conservative number. We are in some uncertain times right now, financial times. But it's a good budget, and it's a balanced budget, and I appreciate everybody's work on that, and hopefully, we can get it over the finish line tonight.
Councilman Martin?
You know, I hate to be redundant, but I have to also, my mama taught me better. I have to say thank you to all that put the work in. I know you guys spent a lot of time on this, and, you know, we had people in the hall cheering us on, walking in here about this budget. So obviously, this may be, you know, good Lord willing, unprecedented for a period of time, but so I'm glad that you all put the work in and got it balanced. So thank you for all the work.
All right, Councilman Robinson?
No comment.
Councilman Boone?
Thanks to all. Thank you very much.
All right, I've just got a couple comments, and to add to that, I'll say thanks again, of course, to the mayor, to Kim, to Asland, to all the department heads. Thank you, council members. I know several of y'all were up here for four or five hours on a Sunday afternoon, away from your families, and I appreciate the mayor going over that with you, Kim going over that, and that just shows, you know, there's a lot goes on behind the scenes. We've had a lot of two-at-a-time meetings, so this isn't... And we've been talking about it for, I feel like, weeks or months in council, so, you know, it's not that we just got this three-ring binder and we're signing off on it. There's been a lot of work before and behind the scenes up till now to get to this point. And also, just wanna thank Representative Faust for all your years of service. Just a true servant, 20 years in the state legislature, plus the Baldwin County Commission. You mean a lot to Fairhope and Baldwin County, and we just appreciate you and glad you're out here tonight with your family to commemorate the service. So thank you. All right, go ahead and get started on the meeting tonight. First item up is an ordinance to establish water and wastewater rates for all customers of the city of Fairhope Water and Wastewater Systems, and to repeal and replace ordinance number 1684.
I'd like to introduce the ordinance.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Burrell's introduced the ordinance. Anyone like to... Anyone like to discuss a thought? Y'all wanna hear from Jason on this at all, or?
Well, I think the public deserves to hear.
All right, Jason, if you wouldn't mind, sir. Need you to come up to the microphone, please. If you wouldn't mind, just giving an overview, just for the record?
This changes from rate per thousand gallons after the 7,000 gallon.
And so before, we were, or currently, I guess we were almost getting a discount for additional usage, and instead, we're... Or be the same. This is to say that if you're gonna use above that 7,000 average, it's gonna cost more. All right. Council members, any questions or comments for Jason, or?
I wanna make a comment, Council President.
Yes, sir.
That is that, you know, it's a... I did ask the question of, you know, what's our average users? And our average usage is less than 7,000 gallons. We're not... This is not aimed at an average user. This is average... This is aimed at a high user, and what it does is it impacts our capacity, and we have to have capacity. It's like a... I use the analogy of an electrical system, you know. You may only need 100 megawatts once a year, but when you want it, you know, when you need it, it's there. And you may average, you know, 80 megawatts. But the same thing with water. We may average 8 million gallons a day, but when we need 9.2, it needs to be there. And it's the big users that cause the capacity charges to go up.
Yep.
Fair enough to say, Jason?
Yeah.
I think that's a pretty good summary. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this has... If I may, Council President?
Yes, sir.
You're speaking of capacity, but this also has to do with us progressing as a city as well, okay? We have to pay for the lines, we have to pay for the maintenance, and in order to keep up with that, this has to happen. Otherwise, we fall into a deficit in the water area. So that has... I just wanna put out that to the public. You're... You know, there's not a... We're not just doing this because we want to do this. We're doing this because it's a necessity for us to keep up as a community, as far as our maintenance and our capital gains, as far as getting water to you and things of that nature. So this is not something that we're just doing. And I wanna... I'm speaking to the social media as well, right now, okay?
All right.
That's on us.
Well, thank you, sir.
We gotta switch those lines.
Makes me wonder, should we graduate more? You know, there's a break at 7,000, and there's a break at...
10,000 or something?
10,000 or 15,000.
I would say maybe we start with this, and that might be something we need to address. If it doesn't...
Well...
If it doesn't make an impact.
Once again, I was very logical. We're using, and I'm just... We're using good water as if water is not precious. I've been to other places, and water is very, very precious. We need to use a gray line, we need to use wastewater, and not the good water for our irrigation. Now, that's on us. That's something that we need to work on. I don't think we should put that on the community. They can help us in this process, but I think that's on us. I'll take responsibility for that.
All right, council, we've heard a little from Jason. Would y'all like to go ahead and let this item lay over, as customary? All right. Let that lay over. Next item up is item number six. It's a resolution that Mayor Sherry Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute an intergovernmental service agreement between Baldwin County Commission and the city of Fairhope regarding the Fairhope Arts Alley Transit Project located in the city of Fairhope. And Richard has this item, and we've been talking about Arts Alley quite a long time now, and Richard addressed this a little bit during the work session. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments for Richard on this item? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion, council? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number seven was pulled from the agenda, so we are moving forward to item number eight, and that's a resolution that Mayor Sherry Sullivan has hereby authorized to execute a contract between the city of Fairhope and Thomas Hospital for the use of city facilities, rental and cleaning fees, including streets and parks, depending on availability and permission from the rental facilities manager, but they would be responsible for incidentals, damages, or security if necessary. And this would cover things like the spring fever chase that Thomas Hospital puts on, other similar items, so. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, we've got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions for the mayor, comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number nine is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to expend impact fees for the project specified in this resolution as designated from the impact fee account for services for the police, $224,892.50. Transportation, $400,000, and Parks and Recreation, $1,392,087, benefit areas. Any questions for Kim on this before we move forward? And I think this is... This all kinda ties in with the budget and proposed projects we have going on. Of course, this is the money that we do collect from developers. I know we have a... I do see comments from time to time on social media, you know, you need to charge impact fees, and why don't you do this? Well, we do, and it's established, we have a accounting firm consultant come in every few years and kinda dictate how that money needs to be allocated. It goes into various buckets based on the percentages they recommend, and the council adopts, and then those monies need to be spent in our area on those particular items. So in this case, we've got police, transportation, and Parks and Rec, all benefiting from the impact fees charged to developers, so.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
On the transportation category, they're asking for 400,000. The Parks and Rec and the police have itemized lists that equate to what they're requesting, but the transportation, I only see one item. It's only half of what they're requesting.
Where are you?
In the resolution.
Oh, okay.
There's a... Shows drainage, 200,000, and a total of 400,000, and I'm trying to find where the other 200,000's coming from.
So 200 for drainage, 200 for resurfacing. Good catch, Councilmember Burrell. All right, any additional questions, comments?
Is that yet to be determined where that will be done, or is that... We go with our priority list? I think that Richard keeps track of. Got you. It'll be the list of...
Any further questions for Kim? Would someone like to make a motion? I don't think we actually have a...
Some would.
Got a motion?
Second.
A second? All right. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 10 is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a retainer agreement with Napoleon Skonik, PLLC, Attorneys at Law for Professional Legal Services, for representation of the city of Fairhope to prosecute any legal claim for negligence or other viable causes of action against any and all parties, individuals, and corporations that are found to be liable under the law for injuries or water supplies by per and polyfluoroalkyl. The latest... Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll go with that. PFAs, dioxane and other emerging hazardous contaminants. All right. I've got mayor.
Yeah.
I've got it, you're supposed to speak to that. You can probably do a little better job than me on the acronyms at least.
I'll try not to butcher it, but I'll ask Marcus to jump in if he needs to. So basically, this would protect the city from any class action lawsuit that would be filed for. Some new EPA guidelines that have been placed on water systems for PFAS, which is something you can sometimes find in your water. It was originally found in water from different sources, and this is just protecting the taxpayers to make sure there's not any large lawsuits against the city for PFAS amounts that could be detected, and to make sure that that cost is passed on to industry or anybody else who created that, and not passed on to the taxpayers for any kind of remediation that would have to be done.
DuPont's already set aside, I think, about $4 billion related to this.
Yeah.
So it's a massive deal. It looks like the city of our size, approximately, just on the raw numbers right now, somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000 in recovery. Just gotta go back into, you know, the system, and we don't even know right now if that's gonna touch that amount. There's a lot of testing requirements that are coming out that are now in the parts per billion that are gonna be parts of a trillion that they can't even measure right now. So there's a lot of unknowns, but it's gonna be...
Yeah, there was not even a lab in the state of Alabama that would test to those parameters, so Jason, I know he's been looking for different labs just to be able to test, but again, there's remediation, carbon filters, things you can put on wells if you have an issue. I know it's happening all over the state, but this is being endorsed by the Alabama Water Association, and they're the ones who, you know, brought this to most of the water systems around here. I've reached out to everyone in Baldwin County, and they've all signed on with it, so.
So a question that the community may ask, have we tested?
We have tested, but not to, I don't think, to the current standards, because they're interim standards at this point. They are not final recommendations from EPA.
But with our tests, we were negative?
We did not have a detect based on the test that we test for right now. Correct.
Thank you.
The only issue that I had, or we saw in the initial contract with the retainer, was an arbitration agreement, that it's... Everything else, choice of law form, is fine. These are New York lawyers. I can understand wanting to have arbitration, not wanting to get no cut down here, but at least we're down here, and we're within our law, and we're within our jurisdiction, and the setups are the same kind of as we have with the opioid situation, so we're paying everybody out, but percentage-wise, we're...
All right. Council, any further questions?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion?
I'd like to comment.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I didn't get a chance to say anything when you asked the question.
I was moving too fast, my bad.
So I did... I had a local attorney reach out to me several months ago, and I know that you may not remember this, but in an executive session, I brought this up, that there was an attorney that had contacted me, a local attorney, that had said that, you know, this is gonna come about, and cities are gonna need to... Anybody, cities, any water systems are gonna need to protect themselves. And so I did, I called him today, and told him that this was on the agenda, and asked him what he thought about it, and he said, "Well, that's who I work with." And so he said, although they're a New York firm, you know, there's somebody local that I know and trust, and they spoke highly... And he said that he would not be working on city of Fairhope at all, but he's in agreement with doing work on many other locations throughout the country. So I thought that was a positive feedback, not having known anything about this law firm. It was somebody local that did have knowledge of them, and he spoke highly of them, and said that that's a good one.
Always comforting to have a local.
I mean, I know that we were probably gonna vote anyway, but I think we would be maybe taking a shot in the dark and going on a fake, but now, we have a little something going.
I was hoping somewhere.
Thank you. Thank you for adding that. All right, council, any further discussion or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 11 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope awards a contract for Fairhope Sewer Upgrade Phase 1, and this is the lift station rehabilitation project to Balkan Inc. in the amount of $5,841,155, and the contract will be paid for with grant funds from ADCNR Restore Act money. So I know Jason covered this a little bit earlier, but council, if you don't mind, Jason, I know you got three in a row up here, so you might need to come close to the mic and be available, and Andy, I think, can address as well.
Yeah, thank you for calling me up here.
Yes, sir.
The Restore Act project's been going on for roughly 18 months now. This first project is gonna be rehabbing six different lift stations within the system. Three of them are gonna be completely replaced. Balkan Inc. is a contractor that I've worked with in the past. They do fantastic work. Excited to have them on this particular project. They're actually on the other project as well, that's one of the other items. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions y'all have associated with the project.
Well, and I think we have discussed this before, but just for the benefit of everyone watching, we're starting this lift station rehabilitation with the six most problematic stations, I assume, or is it more about the location, or? Size? So those would be the ones that have the greatest impact, then, if they were to go out. Council, any questions for Andy or Jason? Yes, sir.
Andy, you may recall, so... Andy, you may recall several years ago, there was some, some studies done about our wastewater system, and it was not your company that had done that.
G M C, I think.
But you guys looked at it.
Yes, sir.
For us.
Yes, sir.
And so, I've always been concerned that, you know, there's another set of eyes on this. How much of this rehabilitation, maybe is, is something that you saw as needing to be done back, how, how many years ago was it, Kevin? Five, six, seven years ago, was that about?
2017, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood.
It's been somewhere in that neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
But do these things just kind of go right along with what?
A lot of them do.
You recommending at the time, and I'm, and I'm only asking this question because there's such a large amount of money as all of these.
Absolutely.
Is that, I, I feel more confident with more sets of eyes.
Absolutely. The, these are addressing some of the more problematic stations in the system. Now, there are others that aren't in this project that still need to be addressed, but that's going to have to be at some later date with some other funding.
Okay. All right, council members, any other questions for Andy or Jason? All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
How, how, how much time futuristically, spending this type of money, would this give us until we have to do this again?
More than likely, it won't be with these particular stations, it's going to be with the other stations that are problematic within the system.
So, how much time, when we spend money like this, how much time do we get out of these stations?
It, it's all going to be dependent on the, the pumps and how, how hard they're worked in the system. Pumps can last seven to 10 years, so there's, there's going to be, there's going to be.
Yeah, besides maintenance, I'm talking about creation, spending this type of money, will we have to do that again?
As long as you continue to grow, there's going to be upgrades that are going to have to be made.
Okay, but this is just a part, other areas?
Correct.
Not with these?
Correct.
Yes, I got you. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes, and y'all hang tight, we've got a couple more. Item number 12 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope awards contract for Fairhope Sewer Upgrade Phase One Side Stream Storage Project to Balcon in the amount of $4,628,830, and that the contract will be paid for with grant funds from the A D C N R Restore Act. Andy, if you want to cover that one?
Sure, this is going to be addressing Woodlands Lift Station. We're creating a new Twin Beach Lift Station south of town here, and also Quail Creek One. Those are three kind of collector stations that pick up large amounts of sewer within the, the system, and they're going to become master stations and have some excess capacity that we're creating to help convey sewer from the distant parts of the system into the treatment plant. A couple of those are going to be using the, the force mains that, that we're improving, and there's some other force main work that's going to be needed to address some of those as well, that I'm sure will come up in the budget season.
All right, counsel, any, any questions or comments related to the side stream storage project? That's three site locations that are going to be covered, this Restore Act money.
Are these all the same capacity? Are they similar?
They're similar. They're, they're all going to be 16-foot diameter wet wells, they, they vary in depth, just depending on the site conditions.
What's that volume vary?
I'm sorry?
What's that volume, I mean gallons?
So, say Twin, Twin Beach, for instance, is 25 feet deep, it's going to have 16 feet of depth, and a 16-foot diameter that's going to be used for storage and conveyance.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's a tremendous amount of capacity in a station that will be pumping straight to the plant.
I'm going to try, well, I'm trying to answer one of Councilman Martin's questions as well. I mean, isn't it that when you have this side stream storage, hopefully your pumps aren't running 24/7, you can extend your life of your pump?
Correct.
You reduce maintenance costs.
Correct.
By, by having a side stream storage.
That's correct.
Yeah. Please ask a question, gentlemen.
I'm good.
Good.
Councilman Bean?
No, understood.
Any, any further questions or comments?
I have that third grade understanding that Corey was talking about earlier, and it's limited to third grade.
All right.
You want to meet both?
Would someone like to make a motion on this item?
Make a motion to award the contract for sewer upgrade phase one.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 13 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope awards contract for Fairhope Sewer Upgrade Phase One Sewer Collection System Rehabilitation, C I P P, gas, pipe, and manhole lining, Project to Gulf Coast Underground LLC, in the amount of $463,534 and 0.06, and that the contract will be paid for with grant funds from the A D C N R Restore Act. Andy?
This particular project's going to be addressing some existing sewer infrastructure, gravity sewer, and manholes that are having an infiltration problem within the city. We tried to pick the areas that we know of having some, some of the more problematic issues in the system. Granted, this is only addressing a very small portion of the system. This is something that probably for the next 10 to 15 years, this, this type of project could go on within the system as things continue to be inspected, but this is something that's going to help address I and I, or infiltration.
And, and that seems to be our biggest challenge when, when we have a major rain event, is that infiltration into the system that, that just causes overload down at the.
That's correct.
You know, the nice thing about this, though, since we've done it in the past, and it seems to have worked very well, each time we do it, it's, does that need less gallons going in that we don't necessarily have to have in the treatment plant, and it stops it from us, so each time we do it, it's always a plus.
I would think so, logically thinking.
Because it does seem to work very well, since we've already done this procedure in, in the past.
All right, counsel, any questions or comments for Jason or Andy on this item? Yes, sir.
Kim, or anybody, was there only one bid for this? I'm only seeing one bid, is that correct?
Yes, there was only one.
There was only one bid?
Okay.
And this, to Andy's point, this is going to be an ongoing, this, this is just what we're able to fund out of this Restore Act money, but this is going to be something we're going to have to either do on our own or find other grant sources for, and we'll be continually working on, on this over the next 10 to 15 years, just trying to upgrade the system.
That's correct.
Yeah, we have to.
Well, again, to make sure everybody understands, the reason for that is there's so much, many lineage foot throughout the city, you can't pay for all of it at one time, so you're just doing this incrementally.
Right, and you don't want to tear up the whole city at one time either.
Well, with C I P P, I don't think you have to tear it up.
No, it's.
That's the good thing with C I P P.
That's right, you, you're basically lining the existing, existing pipe.
That's exactly right. You don't have to tear it up, so that, that one, we don't have to worry about, if we do it with this method.
Yep. All right, would anyone like to make a motion or ask additional questions?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Any further comment? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Jason. Item number 14 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to submit a letter to A M E A requesting three grants totaling $20,000 to be used for operating an entrepreneurial development center in partnership with the Baldwin County, or with the Baldwin Community and Economic Foundation, the 501(c)(3) arm of the Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance, okay? So, it's looking for the University of Alabama and Coastal Alabama Community College in a space provided by and in conjunction with P N C Bank, and this is the Hatch Program upstairs of P N C Bank, and we've done this for at least the last year, and maybe for a couple of years, we're.
Probably been maybe even five years.
Okay, where the lead lawsuit had come to us and asked that we, we request that, and those are grants that A M E A, our electric provider, provides, and we, we can steer that towards that project, and of course, we have a larger, much larger project with Hatch coming in, in the near future, so a cause we want to support. Counsel, any, any questions or comments for the mayor or about the program?
I move that we authorize the mayor to submit the letter requesting the three grants for the purpose of.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 15 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to sign and execute any necessary and appropriate documents so that the City of Fairhope and Fairhope Airport Authority can receive grant funding acting for and in behalf of the Sunny Callahan Airport in Fairhope, so that the grant application for A I P grant number, an A I G grant may be finalized, approved, and accepted in accordance with applicable laws and procedures. Councilman Burrell, as the city's representative and liaison to the Airport Authority, would you like to elaborate on?
Yeah, sure. So, the, the amount that, that we're being offered is about $4.8 million. That's a, that's a considerable amount. We don't have opportunities to get grants that large, that often, and that money will be used to rehabilitate the runway. They're going to add several inches of asphalt to the runway, and they are also going to replace the runway and taxi lighting system and gynecides, which are, which are rundown, and, you know, we constantly replacing bulbs, and so while we're rehabbing the runway, we thought it best to replace those, those lights as well. Now, as the, as the city is the official sponsor of the Fairhope Airport Authority, it requires the mayor's signature to even submit this application, so this, this, it supports the application, but it does not commit the city to any funds. Now, it'd be a good time now to point out that the matching part from the Airport Authority is 5%. The ALDOT through the aviation branch of the, of ALDOT, they kick in 5%, so it's a 90% FAA money, and it's 5% from ALDOT, and there's 5% from the Fairhope Airport Authority. And on this sum of money, that is an awful lot of money for the Fairhope Airport, and so you may say, well, where would they get that? And I, I do want to talk in the future, we may do it in a work session, about how they're going to fund that match. They can borrow that money, which they can afford, but the interest rate may not be that great, and so I do want the council to be thinking, Kim, I hope you're listening as well in Iceland, that, that if we did decide to loan the Airport Authority money at a, at a rate no less than what we're receiving on our deposits, it could, it would be net zero to the city, but it might save the Airport Authority a lot of money. We don't have those numbers as to what that would be structured, it would be some very short-term loan, but I do want to bring that up, I've told the Airport Authority I'd bring that up, and it is, but I told them that I was very cautious not to cost the city any money. That's, I guess that's it, maybe not in a nutshell, but that's, that's the ins and outs of this application right now.
When adding the inches of asphalt, does that increase the size plane that the airport can accommodate?
It does, it does increase the size of the, the aircraft, but, yeah, it's, it's like six inches.
You got to do the depth there.
And so, but I don't want people to think that that means that they're going to start landing 737s out there. You always hear that rumor float around, anytime they're trying to rehabilitate the runway, and that, that's simply not, that's not the case. We have, you know, we have good-sized corporate jets that land out there, and we, we have some more corporate jets that want to land there that just simply can't. But the runway needed a new layer of asphalt anyway, so you might as well.
Might as well do it while you're doing.
You know, just like we're going from a 12-inch, you know, sewage pipe to, you know, 16, or eight to 16, you may not need it now, but you're going to need it in the future, so we're looking to the future.
But it could be that cargo planes for entities here could land to distribute.
Yeah, no, I, I can't tell you, councilman, exactly what that weight is, but it, it really wouldn't be a cargo plane, not, not with that.
Okay, so we're not getting into the depth where the bigger supply planes could come in?
Maybe more runway.
No.
All right.
The thickness, I should say.
Right. And I'll get you those exact weights and what those planes would weigh, what those gross wings are.
Counsel members, any questions for Councilman Burrell? Would, would someone like to make a motion on this item?
Make a motion.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, councilman, for the, for the background on that one. Item number 16 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope will participate in and support the Safe Routes to School initiatives at all schools in the Fairhope feeder pattern in order to gain the benefits mentioned in the resolution and strengthen the quality of life for Fairhope students, families, and neighborhoods. And I know Paige and Charlene, we're going to, I didn't see you, so, just looking for you.
Hi there.
How are you doing today?
I don't really need this, but I'll, I'll use it. I'm, I'm happy to be here, and it's interesting how events can sometimes mobilize so many other things to happen, and the International Walk to School events are what really got me started in the whole Walk to School movement. And anyone in this room that knew Tico Wiseman knows that you did not say no to her very easily, and the Trailblazers have partnered with the city for many, many years, and it started, a lot of it besides the Eastern Shore Trail, was related to International Walk to School. I remember actually Sherri being a staff person for the city, and Tico, and Tico twisted my arm, I had a whole group of kids doing a bike train, as a, just as a parent, and she's like, you've got to participate in this, I want, I want those kids here. I'm like, okay, Tico. So, she really got me started in this whole movement, and it all came from the International Walk to School. So, the partnership between the Trailblazers and the city is a longstanding, vibrant partnership, where the city cares about walkability and bikability, and the Trailblazers, that has been their mission, and it's meant to be across Baldwin County, but it's, it's really been pretty centrally more located in Fairhope. So, I would like to say that that International Walk to School Day led to six years of doing monthly walks to school with three Fairhope schools, once a month for six years. That led to decision, if we really wanted to affect student health, then we were going to need to walk on a daily basis. Walking once, once a year didn't do it, walking once a month didn't do it, but if we walked kids daily, we had an opportunity to affect daily patterns and affect their health. So, we started in 2013 with a full partnership with the city. It's the city, Fairhope East, Fairhope West, which was then just Fairhope Elementary School, and the Trailblazers partnered, and we started the daily walk at school bus. So, quick update, we started from when we scrounged to get 12 kids to participate and beg the parents that it was all going to be safe. We walked 60-plus kids a day, we walked 40-plus parents a day, families walk, entire families and the family dog. So, there are, is a whole community of people that walk down the street on a daily basis, it's just the way they get to school in the morning. All of that came from a partnership stemming from International Walk to School Day, and the city, and the Trailblazers. So, I'm just so proud of the city for being a partner, and no other, nobody else is doing a program like this in our state. So, without the city's firm support, this would have never happened, so I'm just very, very grateful to the City of Fairhope for being a partner all these years in doing this. So, what this has now led to is looking at, how can this grow across Baldwin County? How can this grow to more schools in Fairhope? So, it's not only Fairhope West, but the other school feeder patterns are involved, and we realized, we looked across the U.S., what do they do across the U.S.? They work on getting policies passed, and so we have formed a steering committee at the county level. And so we have formed a steering committee at the county level. We have all three school districts in Baldwin County that are working together on safe routes to school now. So it's the first time this has happened, and we want to encourage more schools across the county to do these programs. And as a part of that, we're getting policies in place. The Eastern Shore Metropolitan Planning Organization is a full partner with the Trailblazers on this. And they have gotten their resolution passed on safe routes to school. We are having, the Baldwin Realtors have already passed their resolution, resolution on supporting safe routes to school. The Baldwin County Commission will consider it next week. And so we feel really proud that this is starting to put policies in place behind this concept that we do want to make it safe for children to be able to walk to school and for parents to feel safe for kids to walk to school. So we are, we have a resolution in front of us, and we are full partnering with the city's pedestrian bicycle committee. And they are a jam-up committee y'all have got. If you don't know it, they're a great committee working for the city. And Bill Hall is going to speak to this now as the co-presenter of this resolution.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Bill Hall. I'm the co-chairperson for the committee. I want to thank the council and the mayor for entertaining this and looking at this resolution. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee strongly endorses this resolution. It'll make walking to school safe, help the students develop healthy habits, and improve in the community's walkability. And that's sort of at the core of what the Pedestrian Bicycle Committee does. We look at things like this. We're participating with the city, validating their database for sidewalks. We're, I've also been asked to write a number of endorsements for grants for the TAP, TAP, I guess it is, yeah, grants. So we've done those. But we're very involved in it, and we really appreciate Charlene's coming forward to us and addressing this to us and bringing this floor to view. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Charlene while she's here?
Are you at Newton yet, Ms. Charlene?
Oh, we where?
Newton.
No, I would love to be at Fairhope East and Newton, but that has not occurred yet. Hopefully sometime in the future.
Have you mapped out a, a walking route for Newton for just thinking ahead?
Of course.
Okay.
When you're obsessed with things, you go do things like walk around and go, where could there possibly be a safe route? So actually, I do have several, actually two options.
So there's, there's, it's there?
There's a potential route.
Okay.
Should all involved wish to participate.
Yeah, got it. Okay, just making sure all could do it.
Okay. And we will make sure that all the council knows when we're walking. We think it's going to be October 5th. If more than one Fairhope school walks, we'll pick different days. So if council members or the mayor and the police chief who've always been there, that if people wish to walk, they will have two different days. So y'all won't miss your walking opportunities with whatever schools. We know Fairhope West, of course, we walk every day, so they will be participating. We do not know if the other schools are going to choose to participate or not. But we appreciate our partnership with the city. We appreciate the city. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Council members, any further comments or would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Charlene.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you.
You all have a good rest of the night.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Item number 17 is a resolution that the Fairhope City Council hereby approves and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Baldwin County Commission, Baldwin County Sheriff's Office, Baldwin County Board of Education, and the City of Fairhope, which outlines the purpose, goals, objectives, and procedures for the administration of the School Resource Officer Program at Baldwin County's public schools. The MOU shall be in effect as of August 12, 2022, and remain in effect for a period of one year from effective date. And I put on here questions for either the mayor or chief. I think the chief had stepped out when we were coming down through the agenda. But any questions for the chief on this? I, I just say that I think it's a great program, and I certainly know, anytime I go to a, a football game or any event downtown and just see the number of kids that approach the different SROs we have and how, how beloved they are in, in their schools, that I, I just know it's a, a great program. It seems to really be working. So appreciate everyone who, who pushed this forward.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gober, you sent a letter, you sent an email to council with some, with some questions about this. And I just, I just want to make a point to say that, you know, although there's some funding that comes from the county, that, that the, the peace officer still, you know, an employee of the City of Fairhope is subject to, to management, i.e. the chief and, and others. And, and they have to adhere to, you know, all the rules and regulations within the Fairhope Police Department. So they're not, you know, they're, while this, these, these things are funded by the county, and, and they do, you know, they, there is some time set aside for them to speak to the schools about things that they may want to see. I, I think that they still adhere to whatever it is that, that our police department has to adhere to, or whatever the chief asks them to adhere to. So I, I thank you for that question. I know you had some, some, some concerns with that, but I still feel like it's a, you know, they're, they're no different than any other police officer that has to abide by all the rules and regulations and policies and tactics that our police force uses.
I don't know what the question was. I'm sorry, Jack. What was the question?
Well, there was a, there was a, there was a question from a citizen because this is being funded by the Sheriff's Department. And he's in the audience, and if you wanted to ask him exactly what he was asking, I think I've got this right. But, you know, there were some questions as to, you know, what policy and procedure do, do this police officer may need to follow? Does the, there were some questions about, are there the principals or administrators or somebody in the school system that's, you know, telling this officer, you know, how to do the job?
Oh, yeah.
And I think they may give feedback. I think, they, they have knowledge of what, what, you know, maybe what needs to be looked at. But it's all in conjunction with our police department.
You mean the actual SROs?
The actual SROs, yes.
Some of our SROs were actually tactical guys. They've, they've, they've been, just to put this out here, I'm not going to name any names, but they've been SWAT, some of our guys. Just to put a comfort lever out there. I've talked and speak and spoken to some of them. So the experience is there.
All right. Any further questions or comments for chief or just comments? Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second. I got three motions and a second. All right. Yeah, that's pretty well covered. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 18 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Efferman and Associates Environmental Consulting LLC as consultant for professional services for environmental and cultural resources assessment and permitting at the K-1 Center, and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. And no, Richard spoke to this during the work session. Councilman Martin had some good comments. Does anyone have any questions for Richard on this or any comments he'd like to make?
I move to approve the selection.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 19 is a resolution that the city council hereby approves procurement of carpet replacement at the Nick Center to Jubilee Flooring and Decorating with a not-to-exceed amount of $17,697.87. And this is being funded through an insurance claim, which is a rollover into the 2023 budget.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Resolution, item number 20 is a resolution to award a bid to Taurus Electrical LLC for Fairhope Dock Marina Electrical System with a total bid proposal not to exceed $150,000. This is for 40 pedestals at the marina. And we had some discussion about the, the current pricing and then the not-to-exceed amount. There's a little bit of a cushion there based on the fluctuation of materials, but those materials are on a 7% markup, and they've got to be presented to you so that you see the invoices, know exactly what's being paid. So hopefully that item will be, be lower than that. But that's just so you don't have to come back to council if the invoice goes above. Counsel, any questions for Ben on that item?
I move to award a bid with a not-to-exceed amount of $150,000.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 21 is a resolution to award a bid to A-Long Boring, Inc. for pump station and forced main maintenance, Phase 2, with a total bid proposal not to exceed $4,688,680. And Jason covered this, I think if I've got this right. This is 16-inch line. We're going down Fairhope Avenue from Bishop to 13, then a little bit past that to Thompson Hall, and then also north on 13 to 104, and then out 104 to 181 to the public site. So quite a lot being covered there. Jason, did I get that accurate? Okay. Any questions for Jason or any, any discussion on this item? It's a large dollar item, but as we know, we've got a lot of utility upgrades we've been making or planning to make in the next year. So definitely necessary, in my opinion, anyways.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 22 is a resolution to award bid to WR Mitchell Contractor, Inc. for the USA MAP water line upgrade and relocation with a total bid proposal not to exceed $79,700. And this is a relocate due to a turn lane that's not being done just for that USA campus, but that's the location of it. So just how it was identified. Any questions for Jason on this item?
Was this a pass-through cough? It wasn't?
Any further comments or questions?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All right, any further discussion?
Is there, there's no aid to construction on this?
This was a relocation because we had to, we had to cap. ALDOT required us, because our line was underneath their turn lane, we had to move the line, so we had to cap it. And now we're having to move it.
That's good enough answering, yes. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 23 is a resolution to award a bid to Larry Puckett Chevrolet for a new Chevrolet 4500 HD Silverado Regular Cab Four-Wheel Drive or Equivalent with a total bid proposal not to exceed $56,584. I believe Jason mentioned they had it budgeted at 68. And the, the vehicle is on the yard, and they're replacing a 2006. Got the bed and crane and everything can attach to that. So all, all in all, we're saving a fairly substantial amount. So any questions for Jason on that vehicle?
Just to clarify, just to make it clear.
You don't, oh, the crane's not? Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this or comment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 24 is a resolution that the city council approves and adopts the recommendations to fund new positions and approve pay grades, reclassify positions, and delete positions as presented in the fiscal year 2023 budget and in said resolution. Mayor, would you mind coming back up and just covering this again? I know we've discussed it in the work session, but there's probably a lot of people watching that, that weren't watching earlier.
I'll be happy to. So what's included in the personnel portion of this budget is 37 new positions. That includes seven new positions in the police department, adding three positions to patrol, a beach patrol officer, communications, some promotions, and then nine new public works positions, which includes a street crew, a right-of-way inspector, and mark, mow, people to mow the grass or gardeners. And then two new employees in sanitation, which will be sanitation hoppers, and 10 new positions in water and wastewater, including an administrative position. It also includes five seasonal or interim positions in recreation, public works, utilities, police, and includes several reclassifications from part-time to full-time or promotions in various departments. And I did speak earlier, just talking about the salary budget, that we do continue to see an increase in the salary budget. We typically are trending about $2 million a year. This year, it's a little over $3 million, and that is in part because of the, the 5% pay increases that we gave. That was about $1 million in June or July. I think it was July.
All right. Counsel, I'm sure you've got some questions or comments on, on this item. So please consider the floor open and just ask the mayor.
What's the function of the, what's the community outreach and communication specialists doing for the police department?
That person will be responsible for social media, for working with any community organizations that need, that are putting on events to map those routes out, to make sure they have the officers that they need if they have to close roads, those kind of things.
Who's handling that now?
There is not anybody handling it now.
How's it getting done?
It was being done before, there were, there was a shared position.
Chief.
Yeah, chief, yeah, chief. Yeah. But she, but she is doing it now because of the volume.
Is that, if I may, Council President, just to piggyback, is that when people are getting permitted and they, they pay us or the officer for that?
They do. Right. For off-duty security or if, I mean, for instance, FIF, I think, is up here to do an event, and that requires review by the police department to make sure if there's street closures, that kind of stuff. Anything I missed, chief? No? Okay.
All right. I know this represents a substantial increase to personnel, but I, I know that's sometimes a challenge to even, you approve 37 positions, and it's going to be a challenge to get them all filled, especially in this environment.
And I think you mentioned earlier that we do budget at 100%. I mean, some of these positions, we obviously may not be able to fill right away. We still have openings in some of our utilities and in other departments, but, you know, we will do our best to make sure they get filled and make sure they have the resources that they need.
And so we're looking at a balanced budget, factoring in all of these people starting on day one.
Correct.
First day of the fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay. Council members, any additional questions?
Did we already vote on it?
We haven't had a motion yet or anything.
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion and, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion and the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 25 is a resolution that the fiscal year, the proposed fiscal year '22 and 2023 budget presented and reviewed this 26th day of September 2022 be hereby approved and adopted for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. Mayor, again, I don't ask you to do.
All of that.
All of that.
I'll hit the highlights.
Would you mind hitting some of the highlights just for people watching?
I'll be happy to. And thank you for your vote on the previous agenda item. I appreciate that. So the 2023 budget highlights include, of course, our focus has been infrastructure and growth, and they continue to be a primary focus, not only of the staff but of the budget. There's $43 million in utility investments, $1 million in resurfacing and drainage, $1 million in traffic improvement projects for public safety. There's, of course, new police officers and new vehicles. Public works includes new trash trucks, a new street crew, right-of-way inspector and sanitation employees. Of course, protecting our natural environment. Of course, protecting our natural environment and enhancing our parks is always a priority for the city, and so we have almost $4 million in park investments in this budget, $1 million in investments in quality of life projects, which include the K-1 Center renovation, the courtyard in downtown Fairhope near the clock, and continuing to, you know, build sidewalks throughout town. Also, this does include the personnel cost, which is the 37 new positions between utilities and general government that you just voted on. Also merit increases of 2% for employees, which will be performance-based. That will be up to department heads to be able to use those as a performance tool, and also continuing to evaluate the symbol health clinic for the employees and hopefully look at some cost savings that we'll see with that once it's open in a year in March. So again, we have almost $130 million budget, and that includes $37 million in the general fund, and then $28 million in of the electric fund, $37 million in the water and sewer fund, $10 million in the gas fund, and $8 million in capital projects. This budget is compared over last budget year to this budget year, we're showing a 12% increase in the budget. And again, we continue to see our sources of revenues from ad valorem tax at 22%, local taxes at 39%, and license and permits at 13%. And that's our revenues. Again, we're very conservative on budgeting our revenues, which we talked about earlier. Kim and her staff do a great job with that, as well as the council by looking at that and making sure we're not, you know, going crazy with the revenues so we can make sure we have some more extra in the, in the end to hopefully transfer to the capital improvements fund. We also have our budgeted expenses. General government, you'll see at 25% for expenses, public safety at 26%, public works at 18%, and recreation at 21%. So pretty much our whole, you know, the majority of our budget is made from those items. We'll continue to invest in infrastructure and in recreation. We have, you know, a competition track, we have restroom facilities, new upgrades to lighting, and of course, the the tri, the North Triangle Nature Park, which is one, a little over $1 million from a GOMESA grant, also adding six pickleball courts at Quell Creek. In streets department or public works, we have a continued investment in street resurfacing, drainage projects, the Bratz Transit Hub, the roundabout, the engineering for the roundabout at 104 in section, and ADA compliance projects. We have, of course, in our utilities, we continue to invest in that infrastructure. We have the gas department, just with system upgrades, and the engineering for the cast iron or leak probe pipe replacement and facility upgrades, that's at $2 million. Electric department, infrastructure upgrades is at $6 million, and that's the upgrades on the substations and also the the loop, looping our system to make a, for a more redundant system. Also downtown underground services and AMI or automated metering infrastructure. The water and wastewater department, combined those two departments, will $14 million in the water department and $20 million in wastewater, and we'll continue with water main and force main upgrades, SCADA upgrades, lift station upgrades, water tank maintenance, and facility upgrades. That does include the $10 million in restore grants that y'all approved tonight as well. And then there is a laundry list of things like vehicles and generators and new servers in general government, and then also in recreation, fitness equipment upgrades, and then the street department, you're going to have street sweepers and concrete mixer trucks and barricades and vehicles. So there's a lot of capital equipment in here that includes a $250,000 contribution towards the library and their expansion on the second floor. And then one other thing that I just went over in the budget previously in the work session was to talk about our community appropriations. That does include $875,000 to the library, $150,000 to the Haven, $57,000 to the Rudder Youth Club, and then various community partners for $200,000. So that's totaling more than $1.2 million in community appropriations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I didn't intend for you to have to go over all that.
No, that's good. That's good. It was quick. It was quick. No, that's fine.
Council members, I know we've, we've covered this in the work session and and we've covered it through through many work sessions leading up till now, but I just want to say again how much I appreciate the mayor, her staff, Kim, Hazlum, the department heads, and then all of you for for all the hours you put in up here at council meetings, in separate meetings, two at a time during the workday when you're taken away from your, your, your day job and even on, as I mentioned earlier, even on Sunday afternoons, whether you're reviewing it on your own or whether you're up here at city hall reviewing it with, with the mayor and Kim. So I just want to say, appreciate all the effort put in, and please, if you've got any additional questions for the mayor or Kim, go ahead and ask them now.
Council President, I got, I want to point out a couple of things. I do have one question as it has to do with the resolution itself. The first thing I want to point out is that we are taking the portion of the sales and use tax that was restricted to the general fund debt repayment account, and we are putting that towards general fund operations. That's $2.8 million this year. And one reason we're able to do that is because we got the city, the general fund, pretty much out of debt. So we knew that if we got ourselves out of debt several years ago, we would be able to use more money for other uses. So that's a, that's a real positive thing that we have that $2.8 million additional. I want to point that out because there's still in the audit that a quarter percent or a quarter of the sales tax, a quarter of the, it's one quarter of a percent of the 2% that we have, right? Or is it a half? It's a half of it. It's a quarter of it, yeah, a half a percent. So then the second part of that is the money that was restricted, it was another half a percent, which is a quarter of the total sales taxes, what I was trying to say, was restricted to the capital projects fund. That's now being diverted to the general fund operations in the amount of, and these are estimated, $2.8 million. That does concern me because we have less money for capital projects, and that's having to go to operations. That's, that's why we ask a lot of tough questions about salaries, personnel, and adding positions and things that we have to fund due to growth, but it is, just so you know, it's diverting $2.8 million that was designated for capital improvements. But be that as it may, we've had to do that in these times. But lastly, I, I just, I want to ask a question. It says that administrative budget transfer, including transfers from one line item to another within a department's operating budget or within a capital project, we're authorizing the city treasurer to do that. So in the past, if, let's say they didn't spend money on something, that gives you the authority to take that money and put it on some other line item. Is that, am I reading that correct? Without having to be brought back before the council. So if we don't spend money on a line item, that the treasurer would, if I read that right, has the authority to take that and put it on some other line item?
It was, it was put in there as an administrative tool for when we had, I don't know, buy some tires that we didn't, we didn't use another supply line, and they need, they needed to go and buy some tires, or they have a truck that just broke their transmission. It was trying to move some small amounts from one line to.
From like supplies to general maintenance or, yeah.
Yes.
It's less than $50,000.
Anything, anything less. If it's a large amount, I wanted to come back to you, but it's trying to save some time.
More specifically, budget transfers less than $50,000 requires approval by the mayor and the city treasurer, but it doesn't have any limit on how much you could move?
What I was wanting it to be is is less, anything less than 50. But if it has to do with personnel, personnel comes to y'all, y'all are the ones that does personnel, but it was just to be able to do some small dollar amounts that could be moved for those examples of, that we've run into, that we have a truck that had a transmission come out of a garbage truck, and it's a large dollar amount, and they wasn't expecting it, and now we needed to move, move $10,000 from a supply.
I get it, and I, and I don't disagree with any of that. I, I think that that, that paragraph not tight enough to define that, though.
What would you recommend? I mean, that was, that was something I just threw in there that we've run into.
You know, $50,000 without permission is, is a lot, in my opinion. It kind of takes.
It's already budgeted dollars. I just want to make sure we clarify that. It's already budgeted dollars. It's just moving it from, again, like general maintenance to our supplies.
It's one line item to another. That's, if you pass it where it's written, it's any line item you want to move it to, any line item you want to move it to, $50,000.
I mean, you tighten it up however you want to, or, yeah, that's fine with us.
Yes.
We know what the intent is.
And so we're, not $50,000 total, but any item under 50?
Correct.
Yeah, you can tighten it up if you want that number to be 10,000, 5,000, but it was just trying to look in some of the instances that we have, a, a supplies, a truck, and this is what I'm going by, is general maintenance, a maintenance item that comes in and that we have some money in supplies that we can get that maintenance done.
But we don't have any money left in maintenance, so we'd be able to transfer between the two, but it's already budgeted money.
Well, I think maybe, for example, if you're thinking of a, a $48,000 truck in the budget and you decide not to buy the truck, then you just move it to a different, different line item.
And we could, and we could limit that where it's, it's just operations and not capital and not personnel, and I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, yeah. I'm trying to come up with some language in my mind that just says it's got to be a like expense. Does that make sense? I'm not sure how to, I'm looking at our attorneys and looking for some guidance, maybe it's how you keep it to something like for like.
Well, do you want to, you could spell it out.
I don't want to delete a truck and buy swivel pool.
Let me ask this, if I may, let me ask this, if I may. How are we doing it now? Are they coming to council with that?
They're coming to the council, yeah.
So you're trying to say that's something that doesn't need to, I'm just, I'm being, you're saying that's something that does not need to come to council?
Because it's already budgeted money. Like, so we may have to take $5,000 out of supplies to move into Richard's maintenance budget because he doesn't have the $5,000 there to fix a garbage truck. That's the kind of stuff that we're trying to just be able to handle administratively without.
The purchase still has to come back to us, though, right?
But not this $5,000, not.
No, no, I'm saying, I mean, but if it's, the $50,000 that we're talking about, I mean, if it's, it'd have to come back.
Yes.
I can, yeah. Not, not to this, it's saying that it diverts.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is even budgeted items come back before the council.
No, the, what we're saying is this is saying not to.
As, as the world exists today.
Oh, today, yes.
When, when, when there is a budgeted item, it still comes back before us to approve, budgeted or not budgeted.
If it is.
No matter what the amount is.
If it is budgeted and depends on if it's a, if it's a ward of a bid, ward of a bid, you're the awarding authority, but if it's purchased off of the state bid, it doesn't if it's budgeted.
We just changed that last year, too.
But you, I mean, this wasn't an intent that it's, that it's a $40,000. This was the $5, $10,000 that we.
And maybe everyone would be comfortable, we just lower that threshold.
Yeah, but the problem is if you lower, if you lower. We afford them a lot of, of trust and do 20.
And that's okay, whatever.
That's a pretty good. If you lower too much, it doesn't really do you any good.
I think if you're at 10 or 20, it does, does you a lot of good. It means you don't have to come to the council and order a set of tires.
And if y'all remember, y'all approved some of those budget amendments, probably, I guess, probably two or three meetings ago, when we came in with a whole laundry list, I think Councilmember Earl commented, and he's like, y'all like to see it consolidated like this. Those are the kind of things that we're talking about that are really, it's almost nickel and diamond in a budget this large, but we know what the intent was. We might not have put it on paper correctly, but.
And we have to track those from the audit because here's the original budget, and then when the auditors come in, I have to give them the original budget and I have to give them any amendments to the budget. So these are being tracked, so this is something that, at any point, I'll be able to give y'all a report of, here's the, any amendments, here's any changes we made. We can't just willy-nilly go in there and decide we want to move here and here. We got to look at it, we got to document, we got to put it on a spreadsheet to track it ourselves because that's something we have to hand to the auditor.
Well, and you know, understand that this is not picking on the two of you, but when these things get written in, these things tend to perpetuate year after year. You know, who knows? That language might still be in that budget adoption resolution in five years to where somebody just says, hey, I can move this from here to here whenever I want, and I can.
Right, no.
Spend money on my pet projects.
What are some other thresholds? Like, Mayor, what's your threshold for being able to just sign off on?
$5,000.
Five? I, I was gonna, thinking of bringing it up to that level, but I couldn't know that was only five. I was thinking that was higher than that.
15, 20? I mean, if, if, I don't know if five works with what they're trying to get accomplished.
I think 15 or 20. Councilmember Earl said 20.
That gives him a little bit more room.
You like 15?
I think 15 or 20 is good.
Yeah.
We'll get a benefit of doubt, go 20. So do we need, we don't, I don't think we have to amend it. We haven't made a motion yet. We can just.
You have to.
Edit that if we.
Are there any other?
You, you can, I think, ask for to edit that to 20 if you want.
Are there any other items before we ask to do that that y'all want to cover?
We don't have to amend that?
Yeah, you, you don't have to amend it because you adopted, you can say, make a motion, adopt with the amendment.
With, yeah, that's right, with the changes.
Yeah. Would you mind changing that to 20? Thank you. Any other discussion? Anyone like to make a motion with, with that at 20,000 as?
Make a motion to approve the budget with that amendment in place.
All right, we've got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Thank y'all, good job.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Get some sleep, get some sleep tonight.
The one thing I do want to say, when I went back and looked at budgets in the past, this is the first one in many years to be passed in September. Yes. So this is a victory for our team that, that's, that was our goal is to be by September 30th, and I appreciate it.
A lot, a lot of hard work and preparation went into that, so thank you. Item number 26 is a resolution that the city council hereby approves the homecoming parade in downtown Fairhope, the Fairhope High School on Thursday, October 13th at 5:30 PM. The route begins at the Fairhope Civic Center to Fairhope Avenue, left on Fairhope Avenue to Bancroft, Bancroft to Magnolia, and then back to the Fairhope Civic Center. The city will provide for public safety. And any questions or comments on this?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
We've got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Item number 27, y'all bear with me, this is, was added to the agenda. This is a resolution that the city of Fairhope did request receive an open bid to procure services for tires for a 2018 Caterpillar 918M transfer station loader at 555 South Section Street. And let's see, at, at the point in time, after evaluating the bids, the bid was awarded to McGriff Tire Company, and the total bid proposal is not to exceed $17,609. And we covered this, we walked this on, Richard covered this during the work session as an add-on, and this is for the transfer station down there at, at the city.
Make a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Any questions for Richard? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 28, let's see if I've got, I don't know if I've got a specific resolution for this item, but item number 28 is a special event request for, for FIF. And this is going to be for the pianos in the park event, and they're asking to shut down the street, basically, school street between, school street between Fairhope Avenue and Morphe Avenue, and the event is going to be at the Hallset Amphitheater on October the 22nd, from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM are the hours they've requested closure. Chief, do you want to speak to that at all? Is everything good with the request? Okay. All right. Council, any questions? I know we've got some.
Yeah, Council President, I'd like to, I'd like to point out, I guess we are strictly voting on to allow the use of the.
The streets.
Sidewalks and maybe even if they need them, I don't know, a barricade, but there was a letter in the package that was asking to waive those fees, and, you know, I love y'all, I've been a big supporter of FIF, but we have an audit that you can't ask to waive fees, and so I want a clarification that we're only given permission to use the, use the street, but the fees are, I think you'd agree, extremely small. I think it comes out to.
$1,200.
Well, with a thousand, with a thousand refundable, it comes out to two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Well, there may be security costs in that. Yeah, you can't waive security costs either.
Security costs, two hundred, ten dollars.
Yes. And I'm only saying that we have to treat everybody, everybody equally.
Good comment. Any additional questions for Chief or for FIF representatives or comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion and a second? And another second? All those in favor of a resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Last item up on here is public participation. If you wish to address the council for any items, whether on the agenda or not, now is your time. You've got three minutes. Please give your name and address. City clerk.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Fidler and I live at two oh one oh three Bohemian Hall Road. I just would like to introduce myself. I'm running for District Ninety-four, the State House of Representatives, and I hope to follow our representative house, who we had the honor of honoring tonight, or you had the honor of honoring tonight. I'd like to ask for your vote on November the eighth. This district represents fair, most of Fairhope, not all of, north of Fairhope. Councilwoman Jack Burrell is not in the district, actually, but Fairhope, Barmel, Point Clear, Marlowe, Fish River and Magnolia Springs are and the areas west of sixty-five and fifty-five, which is where I live. District Ninety-four, the office will be at the Fairhope Courthouse. Our Ballin County Commission actually regulated themselves in two thousand and ten to offer up their buildings to house our House of Representative, our representative delegation. So we do have seven of us that will be representing Ballin County at the state level, the state house level, and on the senate side, we have three. So that consists and comprises our Ballin County delegation, legislative delegation. So I would, I just want to introduce myself and tell you that I'm, I served the city of Fairhope as the Public Works Director between two thousand and one and two thousand and seventeen. And my mother and great-great-grandparents are actually, were born in the district. So I'm seventh generation on mom's side and nineteen thirties in Silver Hill on my father's side. So I'm proud to be able to represent the district possibly with the Republican nomination and the vote of the people. And I'd be proud to represent the city of Fairhope at the state level. Any questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it, Jennifer.
Job well done.
All right.
I'm going to get back up and clarify. So I should let the experts talk about things and I did not let Jason talk about this, but I'm going to clarify it. So Councilwoman Martin asked after the PFAS conversation if we had a detect. I thought we had not, to our current standards, because EPA is still interim ruling. We have tested to the new EPA standards, which is quadrillion, quadrillion, and we do have a detect and well number four. It's something that we're having to report to ADM quarterly and there could be a possibility that we will have to remediate, but I wanted to, I wanted to clarify that because I was incorrect.
That's to this new parts per trillion standard?
Correct. It's actually not parts per trillion, it's quadrillion, yeah. We were testing to trillion, correct? We were testing. And the way it was explained to me is it's pretty much like a BB in a boxcar. That's when I was talking to some representatives from ADM, they were like, you know, it's a BB in a boxcar is really what you're testing to. So we have had a detect. Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. All right, the floor is still open if you wish to address the council. All right, seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close the floor. And council, we do have a letter here from city attorney asking us to go into executive session. I'll read that real quick. As city attorney, Marcus McDowell, I hereby request the Fairhope City Council go into executive session based on section thirty-six dash twenty-five A seven to discuss pending and potential litigation. As city attorney, I hereby request that the city council of the city of Fairhope rise from regular city council meeting on Monday, September twenty-sixth to go into executive session. The city council shall be in executive session for approximately forty-five minutes. At the end of the executive session, the council shall return to the city council chambers to resume regular council meeting. Do we anticipate taking any action? No action to be taken. You're welcome to stick around, but if not, we'll be back in forty-five minutes. We do. Got a motion and a second and the, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the time is seven forty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, dismissed.
Ooh, I got to hustle to get to the game on Thursday. I'm playing in a golf tournament at the, are you playing?